Good evening. I'd like to call to order the public hearing of the Board of Education for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Seifay.
Here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Mr. Bosch.
Here.
Mrs. Popelka.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Scully.
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman.
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Popelka has another commitment this evening and will not be able to join us. The next item on the agenda for the public hearing is the proposal to sell bonds.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to, first of all, welcome all those in attendance, and then introduce Dr. Eric Trinberger, our chief school business official, who will talk about the proposed bond sale.
Sure. So, we previously had a meeting where we've talked about some of the results from Studio GC's life safety survey. They're in the process of completing that work and entering that data into the Illinois State Board's Iowa system. And once that data entry is complete, we'll be forwarding it on for approval to the State Board. So, we're asking the Board to conduct a hearing to sell $8 million worth of life safety bonds. So, this money will be used for the James Hart Roof, as well as replacement of mechanicals at James Hart, some of which are up to 35 years old. So, once the Board approves this hearing, we will need final approval from the State Board to have authority to be able to sell these bonds, and we hope to have that by the end of the calendar year. And then, we will bring forth the bond sale to the Board at that time. And we are able to do this work without any increase on the debt portion of the property tax bills. We're able to structure these bonds so that, as some payments are dropping off, we'll be able to structure these bonds so that there will be no increase.
Just a comment, if I remember correctly, can you comment about like how, what the changes are in the legislation that allows us to do life safety bonds and so on, please?
So, a little over a year ago, legislation was passed that allows school districts to sell life safety bonds outside of the property tax cap. Previously, with life safety, that had to be incorporated within your property tax cap. So, this change allows the Board to be able to sell bonds without going to a referendum and without being able to go outside of the property tax caps.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Board? All right, from the audience? All right. Thank you, Dr. Trinberger. With that, we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Sir.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any more opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to a regular meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Seifay.
Here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Mr. Bosch.
Here.
Mrs. Popelka.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Scully.
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman.
Still here.
Sixth president.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the public hearing of September 15th, 2025, and the regular Board of Education meeting of September 15th, 2025. Are there any questions or corrections or edits that need to be made to the minutes? If not, we have a motion.
So move. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? Motion carries. Future dates.
Yes, we do have an early dismissal day coming up on Halloween Day, Friday, October 31st. Teachers will be here in the afternoon and in service. Students are released midday. That schedule has been posted. It's the same one we've used for several years now, as far as time of dismissal. And then, also, once again, we're going to be celebrating Veterans' Day here. That is also an early release day, but we will be doing our Veterans' Day assembly in the morning. So, if there's family members who are listening, watching, who are veterans, and we'd love to have you join us for the assembly. It's always a great event. And then, a breakfast afterwards for you and family members. So, please, look at the district website. Information is available. We'd love to have you attend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next thing, we have presentations. We have two. First one is a principal proclamation.
Yes. So, next week, this is the board meeting immediately preceding Principal Appreciation Week. And this is the time where the state recognizes the people who lead our buildings. It is an incredibly demanding and sometimes thankless job to be a building principal. There is never a dull moment, as our principals who are seated in the back would attest. And as part of that celebration, each year, Governor Pritzker has a proclamation that is sent to all the districts to share. And in the past, I have sent that out via email to all of you. It is in your board packet. But I thought it would be nice for everybody to be able to hear Governor Pritzker's proclamation, recognizing the work of all of our building principals. So, with that, Mr. Zinnerman, if you would be so kind as to read the proclamation from the governor.
I will not do Governor Pritzker's voice. I will do my own. State of Illinois Executive Department proclamation, whereas, school principals play an integral role in nurturing a positive student-centered culture in elementary, middle, and high schools across the state of Illinois. And whereas, school principals are responsible for attracting and retaining the best teachers and support staff to ensure that each child receives equitable educational opportunities and services to reach their potential. And whereas, it is the primary responsibility of the state of Illinois to provide adequate, equitable resources for schools so that all students have access to a quality education and foundation for a successful future. And whereas, the Illinois Principals Association, which represents over 6,900 educational leaders statewide, believes the educators' experience and voices are essential to crafting effective education policy. And whereas, the Illinois Principals Association is committed to developing, supporting, and advocating for innovative educational leaders through high-quality professional development, networking opportunities, and legislative advocacy. And whereas, school leaders face many obstacles in supporting and educating our young people. And it is through their perseverance, passion, and hope-filled leadership that Illinois continues to produce quality, career-ready students. And whereas, we must continue to encourage, support, and recognize our school principals who have positive impact on Illinois students and the educational system in the land of Lincoln. Therefore, I, J.B. Pritzker, Governor of the state of Illinois, do hereby proclaim October 19th through 25th, 2025, as, I'm sorry, yes, October 19th through the 25th of 2025 as Principals' Week, and October 24th of 2025 as Principals' Day in Illinois to recognize Principals and the Illinois Principals Association for all that they do to help our children learn and succeed. This is in witness of, this is in witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the great seal of the state of Illinois to be affixed, done at the Capitol in the city of Springfield, this 26th day of September in the year of our Lord 2025, and of the state of Illinois 206. Secretary of State Alexis Genullius and Governor Pritzker duly signed.
Thank you, Mr. Zinnerman.
Dr. McCallister.
The state of Illinois is never short for words, but I thought it was important that everyone hear sentiments for our building principles. Three words stuck out to me: perseverance, passion, and hope-filled leadership. And Kim Johnson and Tara Peacock, two of our three principals, are seated in the back right now. Ryan Jones is not able to be here this evening. But to the three of you, I would say, thank you for everything that you do. You're all incredible at your jobs, and not for a second do I underestimate the power that you have, both for students and staff members, and also families, right? It's being a liaison with a lot of different constituencies, and the three of you do it incredibly well. So, thank you for your service. Again, that is next week that we will be recognizing them further, but I did want the Board to publicly hear that. So, let's give them a round of applause.
Okay. Next presentation is an update on the strategic plan for the second year.
All right. Good evening, once again. As we talked about two years ago, this board set forth a five-year strategic plan for our district to follow. And we are now 40% of the way done with that. And I thought it was a good time to give you an update on the goals that we had talked about and the work that our administrative team has done to accomplish those. So, okay. First of all, in the area of curriculum, instruction, and assessment, you know, the idea here is that we are aligning, you hear that word a lot, of alignment. It's basically, the state says, this is what you need to teach, and here is how we are doing it. We are aligning what we're teaching and assessing to what the state has prescribed. So, you can see some of the things we've done the first two years. Forefront is a software tool. You've heard Catherine Zarnicky talk about that before. But that is being used to align assessment data in K-5 math, language arts, and now in social studies and science at Churchill School. This year, we have added, Kim can attest to this, PER assessment, which some of you are familiar with Mastery Manager. That is a way to look at attainment of standards. We are using a different platform, one that the teachers are more excited about, called PER assessment. And then, we have spent a lot of time, year after year, in the summer, with curriculum teams examining work and, again, working on standards alignment and common assessments. So, that is really the heart and soul of what schools do. It is about teaching and learning. And we're excited, right now, the state has embargoed the IAR results from 2025, the assessment that was given last spring. Those results will be made public on October 30th. So, here in a couple of weeks, all of us will be able to see how our kids did in the spring. But really, it's as a result of the work that you see here. Next, in terms of research-based instructional strategies, student engagement, we spent a lot of time training staff members in Cagan, and that's the first thing you've seen there. This summer, we focused on a different area, CHAMP's instruction, which are classroom management strategies for staff, and then also math and literacy instruction. And then, also, we have bridges in math, and then we have a new ELA curriculum at James Hart that now aligns with what we're doing in Churchill School, grades three through five. That's Imagine Learning. And we are utilizing the intermediate service center more than we ever have before. Morgan Consul, seated in the back, Director of Curriculum. ISC4 has really made an effort to increase the amount of training that they're providing to districts like ours. And they have some really outstanding practitioners who oftentimes, they make available free, but even if there's a charge. It's excellent staff development. It is, you know, 10 minutes away from us. So, we have made great use of them, both during the summer and also during the school year, to train staff members. In terms of student needs, we're still working on a universal screener. You've heard a lot about mental health and making sure kids are not only academically prepared, but socially and emotionally prepared. And one of the things that is used at the high school, for example, you see under number two, is a universal screener through Terrace Metrics. That is one provider of universal screenings. But the state is mandating that everyone have a universal screener in place in the next few years. So, we want to be ahead of that, and we currently have our social workers working to review the options that are available so that we too can screen all of our kids to make sure that we're providing for their needs in this realm. In terms of finance, we spend a lot of time in this room and certainly behind closed doors, talking about money for obvious reasons. If you don't have money, you can't do much. So, one of the things that we're incredibly proud of, I know we have a lot of HEA representation here tonight, but the contract that was negotiated last year, we are in the first year of a three-year agreement that provides nice raises for our staff, well-deserved raises for our staff, helps us maintain competitiveness for talent. Dr. Trinberger has, you know, sought, and we received, the property tax relief grant, which, again, it's a cash flow issue for a couple of years. You know, we got an influx of money on the front end. There's a couple of years of relief that we provide. But moving forward, starting with FY '28, that is when we get to count this as part of our tax base. And so, we are going to reap the benefits of this for years to come, enabling us to have a higher revenue stream. And then, also, we were in the third year of a three-year teacher vacancy grant program, which we have been able, it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but $117,000 a year has enabled us to train. A lot of our staff members received EL training. A lot of them went back and got special ed education certifications, which are two hard-to-fill areas for us. So, that money incredibly helpful to us and many other districts in the state of Illinois. But like I said, this is the third year for that program, and it will not be renewed, to the best of our knowledge. And then, most importantly, Dr. Trinberger will continue his work in preparing this five-year forecast. You know, it's, now that we have a contract in place, we can look out and see what our expenses are going to be, at least through the length of that contract. Revenues are a little more difficult to figure out, but we think we have a pretty good feel for that as well. So, trying to give this board not only the knowledge of where we stand for the current fiscal year, but also what's going to happen down the road. What types of decisions do you, we need to make today that will have implications for the next five to 10 years? So, it's important to have good forecasting. And again, my thanks to Dr. Trinberger for some of the plans and numbers he has put together for you to review. Facilities, we just talked about the life safety during the public hearing. So, this is a big, this is a big, big decision and moment for our district. We have talked extensively about the age of our facilities, right? They are all 50, 60, 70 years old. And you are sitting right now, look around. This is the newest thing we have in District 153, and it's now 23 years old. So, our facilities are aging, and a lot of times, it's things you cannot even see. It's the pipes that sit behind walls. It's the wires that are up in the ceiling. So, we are excited to say that next summer, we will have the third of three brand-new roofs over a three-year period. Again, that's thanks to you for investing in the critical part of any building, is to make sure we don't have leaks. Studio GC is, I know they met with us, committed the whole last month, and they kind of spelled out the life safety needs, the Level 1, 2, and 3 items that we're going to be addressing. And now, it's a matter of bonding for that and doing the work. And as Dr. Trinberger mentioned, next summer, James Hart Roof and all the HVAC systems here. I'm not exaggerating when I say, Morgan, she is in the old Millennium office, she and a handful of others. One day, they'll go in there, and it'll be 65 degrees, and then they'll go back the next day, and it'll be 85 degrees. I mean, that's just a mechanical system that just doesn't function as it should. So, we're excited to be able to replace that, to have up-to-date mechanicals. HR, I continue to track and monitor, and I did share this with the Board last month, our hiring practices over the last 10 years now, showing each and every person that we have brought in, each and every person that has left, and the reasons why. And we are excited and happy for people who leave us for promotions, right? That's what we want, is for people to move on and upward, not only in our own district, but also helping other districts with the knowledge they've gained here. At the same time, what we hate is when people leave us for the same job elsewhere, right? What I call a lateral move. So, anytime somebody leaves, we try to understand the reason for that. And if there's things that we're doing that affect the climate and culture here, we work to improve that and work with our administrative team to make sure we have an environment that people want to be at. Education is tough enough when you have good people to work with, right? If you don't even have a place that people want to be, now you're fighting not only student issues and parent issues from time to time, but now you're fighting colleague issues. So, we want this to be a place where people want to work. We're excited that the most recent Five Essentials information, which our principals have seen, and again, which will be on the report card here in two weeks, has shown improvement from where we were before. So, I'm excited, again, at the work that the principals have done in the buildings with the teachers to address climate and culture in their respective areas. Community and public relations, Shelley Peck has worked creating social media, Instagram accounts. We send board meeting summaries out to the staff. So, tomorrow, I will send an email out that basically has the highlights from tonight. A staff intranet site, so before, if you wanted to get staff information, we had a link on our website called Staff Only. The only problem was, it was anybody could access it, right? You didn't have to be a staff member to click on that and be able to see the Staff Only information. So, now, it is an internal site. You have to have office credentials in order to be able to see that. And then, we also have a district resource library utilizing Teams where we are pouring all of our information, so staff members have a one-stop shop for information. And then, not only am I retiring, of course, but also, the district has a huge loss in Shelley Peck. Shelley is retiring along with me, and she's been in this position for 20 years. And so, we are going to have to work with the new superintendent and think about how we want to address the issue of community-public relations and information sharing. So, that's something Shelley and I, once we have a new superintendent named, we will work with that person so they have a hand in selecting the new Director of Communications. And then, last but not least, you know, family involvement. This is something that, you know, Tara, I'm going to steal your words. Tara has said loud and proud, "We are a parent-friendly place." You know, I was in her parent advisory meeting just last week. Churchill School is a parent-friendly place. Those are her words. And so, things like number three, parent advisory meeting, that's something that Tara has done, Kim has done it, meeting with family members who want to come in and just share ideas. And it's really great. You had, what, probably six or seven, yeah, parents that showed up that morning and just shared a lot of great ideas. Many of you are aware, Ryan, she's not here to bask in the glory, but Willow Fall Fest was an idea that she had, and I know many of our Willow staff members went to. It was a fantastic event. It was a couple of weeks ago, after school, beautiful night, never hurts weather-wise, but there were just a lot of things, a pumpkin patch, hayrides, bouncy houses, pizza house, ice cream shop. I mean, just a lot of neat things, a pony for the kids to come out. I mean, it was a true fall fest, and that's something that we look forward to not only continuing, but growing in the future. And then, special ed. I know Melanie is seated in the back. Melanie Amanda Sodes, our Director of Student Support Services. So, one of the things that she is starting, and I think Mel, next week is the first, parent education meetings. These are going to be held on Zoom, but basically, a convenient way to share with parents, I'll say, the inner workings of student support services, you know, so that people who have questions know where to go, but it's a great place, just so they understand the process. Mel, what is the topic for this coming Monday?
Physical therapy.
Physical therapy. So, a lot of, yeah, thank you. So, a lot of our related services people who work, and if you're a parent, perhaps new to the IEP realm, related services are a whole domain in and of themselves. So, this would be great, and I really look forward to those. And Mel, thank you for organizing those meetings. But those are all examples of things we're doing to try to reach, better reach our families. And then, of course, our PTA and PMA, we're very excited to continue work with them and the foundation, who has been very generous to us over the years. But all those leaders and those organizations are really, really dedicated. I know the Fall Fest that I mentioned a second ago was coordinated with PTA. They were heavily involved in that. PMO, PMA, you know the work that they do with all of our concerts every year. They're an incredible organization also. So, continuing to work with them and foster better relationships with our families. So, that's a quick overview of the strategic plan and the six goals that we established. Are there any questions from anybody here? And I think, again, most of that, all of it, is not new to you, but it's kind of just a snapshot of everything that we've worked on. Anybody in the audience, questions about the strategic plan? Okay. Thank you.
So, I guess, real quick, one thought I, am I on? Yep, okay. I guess, just one thought I had, you know, when reading through this, I mean, you spent, what, five, 10 minutes, I guess, talking through this, and I stopped to think about how much time and effort goes into this throughout the year. It's probably hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of hours that staff have put into making all of this take place, and all of this to happen. So, thanks to everybody who contribute to everything that Scott has talked about. It's not a small undertaking by any stretch of the imagination, I believe. So, with that, move on to the next agenda item, which is audience participation. This, during this time, the audience is invited to come up and talk about anything that is not on this evening's agenda. If you could please state your name, or names.
Good evening. Kerry Sullivan, Vice President of the HEA, along with Alice Holstra, Vice President of ESPs for HEA.
Kerry.
I don't know if it's on. I don't think it's. There you go.
Sorry. Kerry Sullivan, Vice President for HEA, and Alice Holstra, Vice President for ESPs for HEA. Tonight, we wanted to come up and read a statement in support of Scott or Dr. McAllister after what happened last board meeting, with your comments from the parent that made that comment about you. I personally have gotten to know you and Lisa since you guys started here. And after our union meeting the other day, we thought that it's important for us to come up here and show our support for you as well. So, Alice is going to read the proclamation for you.
Today, the HEA for 153 publicly affirms its support of Superintendent Dr. McAllister in response to recent criticisms regarding his personal life. The union strongly asserts that the superintendent's professional qualifications and collaborative leadership, not their family status, are the basis for district decisions. The union believes that attacks on a leader's private life are inappropriate and irrelevant to their ability to govern effectively. The superintendent's family status has no bearing on their commitment to public education or their capacity to lead. The union denounces this form of personal attack and stands in solidarity with this superintendent against baseless and hurtful criticisms. As the official representative of our district's educators and support staff, HEA 153 works closely with Superintendent McAllister daily. Through our collaborative work, we have seen firsthand his dedication to serving the interests of all students and staff. The union's priority is a high-quality education for every student in our district, and we know that Superintendent McAllister shares this goal as well. We will continue to work constructively with the superintendent to ensure that all students have the resources they need to succeed. We urge the community to reject personal attacks and focus on the important work of supporting our schools. The union remains committed to a productive and professional relationship with the superintendent and will continue to advocate for the best interests of our members and students. This is from the Homewood Education Association 153 Board and its members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for that. That's, that means more to me than you would know, right? To you and all of your members. So, thank you. I hope everyone also understands, and I did receive several positive comments from people. It wasn't just about me, though, right? I mean, that comment was, but I truly feel that our profession at times is under attack, most of the time unfairly. And so, I think it's important that we stand for the right things, and we're happy to be criticized for our professional decisions. But, you know, I said what I said on behalf of all of us, so thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I just want to reiterate something that I see Scott often put in newsletters, is just people going to social media for criticism or questions or comments instead of going directly to the source, and just how harmful that could be and how unproductive that could be. And I think that was, in that particular instance, not the most productive way to vent frustration, but I think that happens a lot with the schools, is just people saying nasty things to get a reaction on Facebook.
Okay. That, board response. Any response, any questions that were raised at previous meetings? Nope. All right. Next item, report of board committees and meetings. Were there any committee meetings that anyone want to report on? Okay. That superintendent's report.
Yeah, I've mentioned several of the great events that have been taking place in our district that has made the fall really fun and exciting for kids and for staff, and also some great learning that's taking place. So, again, I'm excited to see the Illinois Report Card results when they become public. I've seen them. They're embargoed right now. But I'm excited to see those publicly shared with everybody here in a couple of weeks. I also want to mention, James Hart is just completing their fall season of sports. I know Mr. Sullivan is one of our coaches, as are several people. So, baseball and softball finished their seasons both successfully, and then cross-country just concluded this past weekend. So, thank you to the coaches.
Next item, Report of Board Committees and Meetings. Were there any committee meetings anyone want to report on? Okay. That superintendent's report.
Yeah, I've, I've mentioned several of the great events that have been taking place in our district that has made the fall really fun and exciting for kids and for staff, and, and also some great learning that's taking place. So, again, I'm excited to see the Illinois Report Card results when they become public. I've seen them, they're, they're embargoed right now, but I'm excited to see those publicly shared with everybody here in a couple of weeks. I also want to mention, James Hart is just completing their fall season of sports. I know Mr. Sullivan is one of our coaches, as are several people. So, baseball and softball finished their seasons both successfully, and then cross-country just concluded this past weekend. So, thank you to the coaches who give their time for that, but also to the kids who are able to participate. One of the things that we believe strongly in this district is having opportunities for kids, not only academic, of course, but all the different things that we provide after school, and that's an important part. Right now, our fall musical is rehearsing, Seussical Junior, so looking forward to that in November, when they actually have their productions. But those are the types of things that make this a special district, and those are the types of things that we look forward to continuing, of course, in the future.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda items. First item is authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for November 2025. Any questions or comments about that? Next item is changing the time of the regular Board of Education meeting of November 10th, 2025.
Yeah, one thing I'll mention, we are asking your approval to move up the starting time for next month's board meeting from 7:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. The reason for that change is each fall, we recognize our internal Teacher of the Year Award, what we call the Jerry Moran Award, and then our student award winner, called the Doc Wyler Award, both named after former board members. Because we have kids, we have families, we have staff members and their families, it's quite crowded, we like to just provide a little bit of extra time for that. So, the November board meeting will start at 6:30, pending your approval.
Next item is Personnel Report.
Again, the usual monthly things that jump up on personnel. I did want to mention Renee Ryecraft, who retired a couple of years ago, coming back a second year after her retirement to coach volleyball. So, we're excited to have Renee back in that capacity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board about Personnel Report? If not, do we have approval for the Consent Agenda? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented in Item 7A, 7B, and 7C.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Moving on to our Action Agenda items. The first one is the second payment of September 2025 bills and the first payment of October 2025 bills. Are there any questions or comments on the bills that haven't been answered, that you have yet? All right. Any question or comments from the audience? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorize a second payment of September 2025 bills and the first payment of October 2025 bills in an amount not to exceed $2,928,767.40.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Next item, Approval of MOU Regarding Dean's Assistant Stipend.
Yes, I met with Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Chapluka, the HEA co-Vice Presidents, to talk about this MOU. During negotiations, those of you who are a member, who are a part of that process, recall that we had extensive discussions about the dean's assistant role. So, each building has a dean, there's also an assistant that helps the dean in those buildings, and we had talked about ways to, to recognize the work they do in the form of compensation, and we came up with a plan to have RBT certification. As we dug into the details a little bit more about the RBT certification, we realized that's not the most appropriate representation of what our dean's assistants do, and it wouldn't be the best avenue to provide the appropriate training for our dean's assistants, but also appropriate compensation. So, rather than have them seek a certification and a change on the salary schedule in that manner, I'm recommending simply increasing the stipend. And the caveat in that is that they do restorative practices training, which would be more germane to the work that they do. So, current stipend is about $2,100, and this increases that to $5,000, which is, again, reflective of the work they do, but it also gets them training that will help them in their day-to-day work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board? From the audience? All right, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding with the HEA regarding the dean's assistant stipend.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Employment.
Yes, we have three people recommended for employment this evening, Roxana Foley, Recess Supervisor at Churchill, Jamaya McDonald, Supervisor at Willow, and Latricia Flowers, a server at James Hart.
Any questions from the board, from the audience? If not, do we have a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Roxana Foley effective September 24th, 2025, Jamaya McDonald effective October 6th, 2025, and Latricia Flowers effective October 16th, 2025, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than October 18th, 2025, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the positions to be filled. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Scully? Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
All ayes.
Motion carries. Next item is Discussion Items. Are there any items anyone would like to discuss this evening? Okay. Written Communication to the Board of Education.
No more "we're asked" to read, so we're good.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, the board will move to executive session to discuss the employment of a specific person. When we return from executive session, executive session, we will leave executive session only to adjourn and not conduct any other business at the conclusion of executive session. All right. So, do we have a motion to move into executive session?
Will move.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, and have a good evening, everybody.